Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council Meeting of Monday, January 28, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Prior to the roll call, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for the former town clerk,
Evelyn Baldiger. Evelyn passed away on Sunday, January 20th. Evelyn was the town clerk for the town of Southbridge, serving from 1979 to 1991. Our thoughts and prayers are with her family, and may she rest in peace. Madam Secretary, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manna.
Present.
Counselor Nash.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
All remaining members present. Item 3A, considering accepted town council minutes of Monday, December 17, 2018, as amended.
Second.
Is there any further errors, corrections, or omissions based on those amended minutes? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 3B, considering accepted town council minutes of Monday, January 14, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any errors, corrections, or omissions on those. Counselor Steves.
Yeah, let's see. And item number 16, I think Heather Blakely also mentioned, and I think it should be in the records, that the main street project will require some Chapter 90 money as well, since it's only partly in the CDBG zone. I think she said that. And also an item number 17, it says GCC Associates, it should be GCG Associates. And also under the counselor's form in my paragraph, I just wanted to clarify a little bit. I hope I didn't say it this way, but he mentioned that Charlton has suspended, it should actually be the state has suspended the proposal for the liquid national gas, natural gas project, and that we're going to be an intervener, not an interviewer. And also at the very end, the meeting returned to the open 11:05 session at, just rearrange the words there.
Any other corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor is amended. Did you have something, Counselor?
I'm just curious.
Okay.
On Agenda Item Number 2, roll call. Former Councilor Morales is mentioned in the first line, and also is absent in the second line. And then further on, in Agenda Item 5, you announced that he resigned effective the 11th.
Sure.
I'm wondering if that needs to be amended in some way, shape, or form.
Yeah, I think I announced it later on in the minutes. So originally, I said, I don't know if we termed it as absent, but it wasn't until later that I announced that he had resigned. So, but you can amend that if you'd like. Thank you. I think it was a little confusing, I think I said we'd take it up later in the announcements.
Yeah, sure.
So, thank you though. Any further corrections? All those in favor is amended? Unanimous, all present. Subcommittee reports to General Government. Counselor Steves.
Hi, we did have a meeting recently, and unfortunately, I don't have a hard copy of the minutes in front of me. Let's see, there were a couple of the items, let's see, the numbers 12, 13, 14, I think it was 14 on ours, and I think that's what was it, that was it for, on our agenda. And we do have one this later this week, on Wednesday, at 6:30.
Thank you. Department of Public Works, Counsel DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Meeting was jointly held on January 22 of the Department of Public Works Subcommittee and the Town Council. Eleven of the items on tonight's agenda were discussed at that meeting. As I recall, after much discussion, all of the items presented were voted on in the positive to recommend to Council for approval.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counsel Nash.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. EHS Subcommittee met on Wednesday, January 23. Good lively discussion, and one agenda item for Council action was unanimously supported at that particular meeting. It's item number 20 on tonight's agenda. No future meetings are scheduled as yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Plan and Development, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have not had a meeting since our last town council meeting. We do not have one scheduled at this time. Thank you. That's all I have.
Protections of persons and property, Counsel Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. There was a meeting held, was it the 17th, I think it was? January 17th?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. And I don't have the minutes for those, and thank you very much for sharing that for me, because I was late due to work. I do have a tentative meeting scheduled for February 7 at 7:00 PM. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I will get those minutes over to you as soon as possible by the next meeting, okay?
No rush.
Chairman's announcement?
I'm busy.
I have no announcements this evening. Town Managers' announcements.
Just a couple of comments, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to thank those town counselors who showed up at the MMA meeting. It was great to see so many counselors there getting professional development. I truly believe it's an asset in terms of improving everyone's service to the public, and the money we invest in going to that conference, I think, is well invested, because you bring home a lot of information that is useful to the citizens of the town. As all of you know, we're beginning negotiations with the Police and Fire Department. Those will be starting very, very shortly. Tomorrow, Chris Heron will be speaking at the middle school, a substance abuse speaker, a former Boston Celtic. Very exciting to listen to him last year. Tomorrow's meeting will be for all the middle school students at 12:30 tomorrow, and any counselor who can make it, I think you'll find it to be a very worthwhile event. Had an opportunity to meet with the Substance Abuse Task Force, and we're starting planning for next events. We pretty much accomplished most of the things we had scheduled. We still have some leftover money to work with, so we are looking at developing a budget for next year's projects and stuff. So I think it, there's still a lot of excitement from the accomplishments we had of the previous year going into this year, so I'm looking forward to seeing that continue. I think that is all I have tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheriff, on that?
Yes, Counsel.
12:30.
At the middle school. Thank you.
Item 7, presentation, current state of our recycling by the Director of Inspection Services, Andy Pelletier, as well as Anna Smith, the landfill monitor agent. Good evening.
Good evening. How are you? Early in December, this council voted to support a recycling program, heavily emphasizing education, trying to improve the quality of our recycling in the town of Southbridge. I know a lot of you are familiar with Anna Smith, but I suspect some of you don't know her well, so I'd like to introduce Anna. She is the recycling coordinator, interim recycling coordinator, until the landfill goes back to full operation in capping. So we have until March, or late March, early April, when the construction season starts again, to launch a program and hopefully get some sort of impact from that program towards improving our recycling. Anna and I have, and I say Anna and I, because I'm going to steal her credit, but it's really, Anna has put a lot of work into coming up with a plan, passing a plan through the Board of Health, and we would now like to introduce the consternation with our recycling, the concerns generally, then a little bit more specifically with some audits that we had done on our loads in particular, and then our plan moving forward. So if I could, I'd like to introduce Anna. She is the recycling, interim recycling educator for the town of Southbridge.
Thanks, Andy. Good evening, members of the council. I appreciate you giving us the time tonight to do this presentation. So, we have launched an education program to try and clean up the recycling, and we're being as vigorous as we can in the education piece, and you'll see as I move along through that. Okay, so what we've discovered is currently our recycling contains between 13 and 35% either trash or non-recyclables. In today's recycling markets, they demand cleaner products. In its current state, our recycling is at risk of being disposed of. We've actually had a couple of loads, we got calls from Auburn, do you remember when that was?
When we first introduced this program, I had mentioned to this council that we had had one or two loads already rejected and sent out for trash. So all the efforts that the citizens put into recycling were basically went to waste, literally. The recycling trucks were dumped on the floor, scooped up, put into a truck, and sent off to our own landfill back in November, so.
So, you know, it takes effort to recycle, and we do appreciate the effort that people put into this. So we recognize the effort that it takes to recycle, and we do appreciate that effort. So we're employing people to help, you know, be reeducated in this, so that the efforts don't go to waste, literally. So in order to educate, we're putting out as much information as we can. This is sort of our template that we're using. This is developed by DEP, and we were trying to choose something as simple as possible in both English and Spanish to get the word out. There's a lot of materials out there that have recycling symbols on it. It doesn't necessarily mean that it's acceptable in our program, unfortunately, so I think that's some of the gap that we need to close. When you think of what can go in the recycling bin, a good rule of thumb is containers, whether it be metal, plastic, or glass. For metal, we're looking at food or beverage cans, plastics will be your bottles, jars, containers, tubs, you know, like margarine comes in, and glass is bottles and jars. As far as paper and cardboard, they're looking for clean materials. The things that we don't want to see in the recycling bins are plastic bags. A lot of people like to bag their recyclables, and a former director of our department asked at one point for people to bag their recyclables. That is no longer the case. We don't want people to bag their recyclables in a plastic bag. Paper bag is fine. The problem with plastic bags, other than the fact that it gets into the trees when it's windblown, it gets tangled in the equipment that it goes through in Auburn, so it's a real problem. And it doesn't end up being recycled through that. If it gets shredded through the machinery, it's not recyclable anyways, so no plastic bags of any kind. No food waste, and that means containers need to be rinsed out. Pizza boxes need to be clean, so it has to be clean material, no food. No clothing or textiles, no shoes, no tanglers, what we call tanglers. That would be any kind of strapping, hoses, cords, electronic cords, anything like that is not acceptable. And again, it gets caught up in the equipment and causes a shutdown.
Anna, she has a question.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, through you too. Anna, when you say no plastic bags of any kind, does that mean like the plastic bags that like maybe some screws would come in in the box when you put something together, or plastic wrap, or anything? Nothing plastic, like Saran Wrap? No Ziploc baggies? Nothing like that?
That's correct.
Really?
Thank you for clarifying that, because one of the items that we see is dog food bags, pellets come in those kind of sturdy bags, those are not acceptable either. And there are other uses for those, but they're not acceptable in the program. Anything, plastic wrap, the wrap that goes around water bottles. I saw when we were out on the curb last week, you know, people, I have to give people a lot of credit, because I know, I think their hearts are in the right place, and they're really trying to recycle as much as they can, but you get some frozen foods in bags, and we've seen those in the recycling bins. You know, it's a really good effort, but it's not, it's not going to end up being recycled. So it really needs to go in the trash rather than, you know, the trash initially, rather than it ending up in the trash in the long run. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Counsel Steves has a question.
Hi, Anna, thanks. Following up on plastic bags, have we tried to reach out to someone like the supermarkets and maybe, is there any way we could, as a town, collect some of those, some of those bags and turn them into the supermarkets, since they have the collection capacity to recycle them?
Well, I'm glad you asked that question, because most grocery stores do
Exactly.
accept them.
I was thinking it might be a little easier for the citizens if we could come up with some way where we can collect them at home, because if they're going to put them in the recycling, they're probably not going to take them back to the supermarket, they usually don't, unfortunately. So I was wondering if you could figure out some way where we can collect them at home as part of the recycling collection, but just turn them into the supermarket, so that they can actually do the recycling.
I envision that if they have a bag from a supermarket, they probably go to that supermarket shopping.
Oh, I'm sure they do, but that doesn't mean they bring it back.
Actually, coming to the town hall to drop off your plastic bags would be an inconvenience, because you're going out of your way, whereas most people shop at least once every two weeks. The most convenient way would be bring them back to where you got them.
No, I was thinking in terms of as part of the pickup, not bringing them here.
Another, the Board of Health right now is putting the final touches on a plastic bag ban.
Yeah, I know.
So hopefully, that's going to significantly reduce the number of plastic bags
Hopefully, yeah.
that are even available to be missed.
Yeah, I'm aware of that too, so. I'm more in that favor, I'm more in favor of that than, yeah.
Thank you.
So Andy and I went down to Auburn several times to look at what the loads, you know, how the loads are as they come into Auburn. And, you know, we basically saw, I don't know if you can see in this picture, I'm going to get my little pointer out here.
Right, right off the bat, you see the plastic bags.
But there's also other plastics in here that people may have thought were recyclable. I call them bulky plastics. Andy likes to call them hard plastics. Over here is, I don't know what it is, some sort of, it had legs on it, made out of plastic.
Looks like a computer tray.
A computer tray? Okay. And then over here, we have another type of a hard plastic. That's, it's just not, not acceptable in the program.
Again, what we're trying to target are the containers. If it does not have the triangle on it, then we don't want it in the recycling. There are different kinds of plastics. Some polymers are recyclable, some of them are not.
But even if it does have the triangle on it, it may not qualify. If it's a bulky, like a trash barrel, like you may have in your office, if you turn it upside down, you're going to see that triangle there, but they actually discourage those, because they're considered bulky, and they just don't go through the process very well, and chances are, they're going to end up as trash. So here we have a stuffed animal and a big plastic bag. Stuffed animal, teddy bear is on the right, not acceptable in the program. More plastic bags, a lot of bagged recyclables, bags of trash even in the recycling. Here's some of the straps, the tanglers that I mentioned. They were probably in some sort of shipping, something that was shipped, and they had to put straps around it to hold it in place. That is a problem at the recycling center. Over here, we see a laundry basket, that would be considered a bulky or a hard plastic. More bags, another hard plastic, some sort of a, I don't know, legs of some kind. Over here is a lunch bag, that would be considered like a textile, so that's not acceptable. Tarps, again, is another item that would get all jammed up in the equipment. Somebody had the right idea, the cardboard from old records. They wanted to recycle, but there were records in it, and the records are not recyclable. Over here, a part of an engine. Here's a good example of what I was talking about. Over here, I don't know if you can see it, but there's the recycling triangle, but styrofoam is not accepted in our program. And styrofoam can end up being a litter problem on the curb, so it's something that's better put in a trash bag, where it won't, you know, become pelletized and end up as litter. Here's some textiles. This one I put in, because there's a dish here or some sort of container that the food wasn't rinsed out of. What we're seeing it on curbside, because we have been out, we went out last week and started doing curbside audits, so the four problem issues that we saw, the most plentiful of, is the plastic bags or films. That was number one. We saw a lot of pizza boxes. We're fortunate to have a lot of pizza pallets in town, and people are visiting them. So the thing about pizza boxes is, the cardboard is great to recycle, but if it has food or grease on it, it's just, it's not, it's not going to be good product for the recycling market. So what I'd like to suggest about pizza boxes is, if it's clean, because sometimes there'll be like a tray, a tray on your, you know, under your pizza, you could take that out, and then if the box is clean, simply fold it inside out, so that we see it in the bin as being clean. Or if the bottom's dirty, I'll rip off the top and just recycle the top. So that's, did you want to say something about pizza boxes?
The slightest bit of grease in a bundle of paper can ruin the bundle. The slightest bit of grease. So if there's anything on your pizza boxes, don't throw it away. I mean, don't throw it in the recycling, throw it away.
Thanks, Andy. So the third item was non-recyclables of all different, you know, anywhere from textiles, shoes, all kinds of stuff, and then styrofoam, as I mentioned. So Casella did an audit of the recycling before we started going out on the curb, so to get a look at a couple of things. Where were we in terms of, you know, how bad was it? And which routes were the most egregious? So this is what they came up, came up with, and as you can see, overall, the average is about 25.37% residual. When I say residual, it's items that are not recyclable. And, and... Should they speak about how they did the audits?
No.
Okay. And then you can see that, based on the routes, Monday is kind of the worst route, Wednesday coming in second, and Tuesday, the third worst route. So those three are the ones we're really concentrating on, we're putting a lot of effort into those routes. The results of the audits in Auburn, they identified these five contaminants. Plastic bags are kind of like the top three, because they recognize bag recyclables or bag trash. Textiles, and then scrap metal or small appliances. And that's another item to talk about a little bit, is metal, because metal is recyclable. Everybody knows metal is recyclable. But if it's not a metal can, it's not recyclable in the program. It needs to go to a metal recycler. And small appliances, you know, that needs to be put in the trash. All right, so our goal, of course, is to reduce the contamination that we're finding in the recycling. And we're launching a big education program. We're trying to get every avenue of education, every media out there, we're getting to. The town website has been updated, and we continue to update it, because there's a lot of like nooks and crannies where information has been placed regarding our trash and recycling program, so we're getting to it all. So this is our website, of course. If you want to go to the trash and recycling portion of our website, just simply put in ThinkReduce.com, and it'll take you directly there. We've also been fortunate to have some information being put up on Focus on Southbridge and the Town Manager's Facebook page. I'm trying to do a weekly notice on those pages. The first week, we introduced our kind of list of recyclables do's and don'ts, and well, I'll get to the second part when we move on. We are in the works of getting townwide mailers done, and those will go to every household and property owner.
Do you want to speak on that? The, there's going to be, this is the first year that we're launching this program. We're trying to get heavy education, so as you can expect, this is going to be a little more expensive than I would expect subsequent years. I will be coming to the council. The cost to do those mailers is about $4,000. We want them to go to every residence and every owner, so there is a dedicated account for recycling. It must be used for recycling. So I have prepared a memo that I'm going to run through the EHS to try to transfer $4,000, so that we can launch this program in full force, and hopefully, we'll be able to maintain it at a lesser value or a lesser cost into the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you too. Mr. Pelletier, a few years back, when there was recycling efforts going on too, and a lot of the education went into the schools. I would really like to see more of the education in the neighborhoods, like groups of people going out and talking to people. I was at the MMA conference, I was at the recycling seminar, and the group, where was it, from Newton or something like that, out there towards Boston, they had a group of people going out digging through the recycling, and, you know, putting the stickers on the recycling. And I think too, when we had a recycling, we had a recycling coordinator, and we had somebody doing that, we had a dedicated person looking at the recycling and putting the tags. They call them the recycle cop, but you know what I'm talking about, don't you? And we reduced a lot of the garbage going into the recycle bins then, but then all of a sudden, it was, people didn't want it, so it went away, unfortunately. But that's what I'd like to see. I mean, we need to educate our kids in school, but we need to really educate the parents.
In the short time that we've been at curbside so far, we've had three of us at curbside, myself, Anna, and Hector, who is our solid waste, our curbside enforcement agent. And people are catching us putting tags on the totas, and they're coming out and talking to us. Well received. We're explaining to them that at the moment, it's an education process, and we're just trying to let people know the do's and don'ts of recycling. Well received. I think probably nine or 10 people have talked to me, and only one of them threatened my life, so the others were like, oh, okay, that's good. We actually had one person who got a tag and was like, I'm part of the group, okay?
Well, it's good that you're getting good reception, except for that one person. But I mean, and I'll have to say that one thing I did learn at the recycling, one of the things that I did learn, was that the streamline seems to be the most difficult. Before, they had the two processes, you had the two bins, where you separate the paper products from the plastic and the glass and stuff. With everything mixed in together, I think that's posed a problem, not only for our community, but many communities. That's what I gathered from that informational seminar. So I mean, if there's something like, I don't know, maybe in the future, maybe we could go back to that two-step process.
We've talked extensively with Casella. I talked to the DEP agent who used to be in Newton, I think she was in Newton, and we've pretty much been told, we've gone single stream, it's never going back. It's inefficient, it takes too many people to do it, it's just, it's never going back. So we've got to find a way to make it work, as it is.
But yes, a two-step process for that one little community works very well for them, and they have a very good recycling rate, so that's all. Thank you.
All right, so the mailers are in the works. Newspaper ads, Casella has agreed to fund an inset into the newspaper, so we're going to use our sort of, well, I'll show it to you in just a moment, and it'll be done up as an insert. And then we're doing, we're going to do some educational videos on the access channel. So this is what the town mailers will look like. They're going to be a flat mailer, similar to ones that were sent out in October. And Center of Hope, is it okay to say that? Center of Hope is going to do these up for us. So that'll be one side, and then on the other side will be our sort of streamlined do's and don'ts. So we have been going out doing curbside education, like Andy said, myself, Andy, and And we're putting out what are called oops tags, so it basically, thank you, you can be my Vanna White. So, yeah, and you can see that it basically says, oops, you know, everybody makes a mistake, so, you know, we're going to pick up your recycling, here's what we noticed, you know, could you correct it next time? So it's a pretty non-threatening little green tag.
Are you going to put the check marks?
Yes, we do check them off, and we try to be as descriptive as possible, because people are going to forget what they put in their bin, and now it's empty. So what did I put there? So we try to be as descriptive as possible, so that they know.
If I may?
Yep.
So you're saying, even though they're going to get the tag, you're still going to empty their bin?
For now.
Oh, I wouldn't do that, because this is one thing we learned too at that seminar, that they're not emptying the bins. And so the people have to go through them and take out the non-recyclables. And who wants to do that? I mean, it's like a kid, telling you to clean your room 20 times, right? You... You get it done once and they don't do it again.
Our plan is to eventually go to not picking up. I have this death fear that if I don't give them ample notification, ample warning, that there is going to be trash hoarding, there's going to be illegal dumping. Because if you have a full bin this week and I don't pick it up, what are you going to do with it between now and next week with what you accumulate? So we're going to give everybody ample opportunity for education and then we will move forward as Anna will explain in a moment or two.
Okay. So so far, we've tagged over 300 containers. We find that most containers have unacceptable materials. It was more rare to find one that was good. So that tells us that education is needed. And of course, the most common mistake is the plastic bags. So as Andy mentioned, and I mentioned, we're putting out the green oops tags now. We started last week and we'll run that all the way through February. Starting our next recycling week, we're going to be adding the red sticker. So we'll place that on top of the green sticker and it says that as of March 1st, any non-compliant container will not be picked up. So we should talk a little bit about what does it mean to be non-compliant? We're, we're not talking about one item or, or even two in a recycling bin that isn't recyclable. This would be kind of like the whole, you know, a good 50% from what we can view on the top is non-recyclable. Right? Did I say 50? 50%?
She said 50. I think she meant 15. We had discussed contamination levels between 10 and 15% to be the line that we're not going to pick them up. We need to get the overall Auburn, I mean, overall Southbridge, bad moment, overall Southbridge, we, we have to get the loads down around 10%, especially five years from now. We own these. So this is, this, it's nice to say this is a Casella problem. It's not. We need to get ready for our contract. So.
Thanks, Andy. Okay. So if people have any questions, there's several places where information can be found. Of course, on the town website. And as I mentioned earlier, if you just go on thinkreduce.com, it'll take you directly to the trash and recycling portion of our website. Mass CEP also has a, a site called recycle smart ma.org. And on that site, you can actually put in, like if you're not sure, you can put in an item and it'll tell you whether it's recyclable or not, or, you know, some other alternative method of disposing of it. You can call the health department. Casella also has a section on their website. They're calling it recycle better. And this is the link to that. And that's it. Thank you very much.
I'd really love to encourage everybody to go to the thinkreduce.com. We are going to try to load as much information on recycling as well as disposal on that site. Hopefully a direct link, if I can figure out how to do this, a direct link to is this recyclable and also a direct link with how can I dispose of this? So if it's not recyclable, you should be able to get out of that one and get into how can I dispose of this?
Actually, and Andy may not know because Alicia in our office and I have been working on this, we're actually trying to get that all updated on our own website. I researched every possible, just about every possible item that someone could ask about and I gave that information to Alicia. So she's in the process of updating that on our website as well.
Questions? Comments? Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recommendation only, maybe on the website itself or on your town website or wherever you, your central hub is at, maybe put a, a link to an email that strictly goes to you, Anna, or to Andy and say, hey, I've got a question on this recycling item or possible recycling item. That way it doesn't get bogged down into some other filing cabinet.
So a direct link to Anna is what you're saying?
Like, right to Anna, yeah. Can I get a copy of that PowerPoint? And will it be on the town's website? Or is it there now?
If we can figure out how to do it.
We'll, we'll talk with Alicia, she's our.
You're welcome.
We have a guru in our office.
She's getting bogged down on all requests, but we'll, we'll see if we can do that.
I do want to say, I have seen some positive, quite a few citizens as far as positive feedback from the stickers. Some people aren't happy, but some are actually saying, I wasn't aware of this and I wasn't aware of that. So I've seen more positive than negative. And lastly, that Monday and Wednesday route, can I get a general, when you get a chance, a, a general route of those areas on Mondays and Wednesdays that seem to be the, the problems right now with the 35% non-recyclable items?
That's actually, I believe it's on our website.
Is it on the website?
The routes are listed on the website, but I'm, I'm happy to send it to you as well, dear.
Again, on thinkreduce.com, you can click on trash routes and it will tell you every day's trash routes.
Okay, that's right, it is on there, yep. All right. That's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Agenda item eight, citizens forum. Does anyone from the audience wishes to address counsel?
Kathy LaFiori, 51, Mark Avenue. I just want to start out by saying that I'm very impressed with this town council and how everybody works to try to get the answers. And I appreciate that. I've been up here before for this concern within the past couple of years, I would say. And it's the yellow line grids that are all over town. And people just drive right up over them. And it's just such a danger. If they're anywhere near a crosswalk, if anyone was crossing, it could be a very bad ending with story. My niece was in a very serious accident at the beginning of January. And I'm just really a little freaked out by seeing these careless drivers. I'm just more aware of it. And some people think that it's older drivers that should not be driving. These aren't older drivers that I see doing these things. So I just wanted to bring, bring that point up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that in the Main Street area again?
Oh, it's all of it. One day, we were by the Wells Junior High School. I don't think it's a natural grid there, but we were in the line of traffic to go down Main Street and someone came on the side of us, which was the lane for traffic coming up Main Street. And there is a crosswalk there. And I was so stunned that I couldn't get a license plate number. I, I don't know, it's just unbelievable.
I'll, I'll pass it on to the chief, but counsel man?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mrs. LaFiori. I hope I pronounced your last name right.
Yes.
I, I was going to say the Traffic Commission, Chief Woodson. That's where you should really voice your, I mean, voice it here too, but that's where this can be brought up and they can probably run some type of investigation if it's warranted.
Okay.
So the Traffic Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. I'll definitely follow up with the chief though.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Yeah, I completely agree with what Kathy was just saying because I don't know how often I've seen people run through that, that crosswalk right in front of the library or most of the Main Street crosswalks actually, but that one especially. I think having a good, I think it might be good idea to have a plainclothes police officer to stand there for a little while and just tag people as they go through it. That'll stop them. I don't know if it would work, but it would stop them for a while anyway.
I'll follow up with the chief. I'll have the town manager follow up with the chief. Okay. Any other citizens? Any others? Seeing none? I'm nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Deputy Chief Joseph Hewlic to the Fire Station Building Committee effective immediately for an indefinite period to replace former Fire Chief Mark DeFranzo.
So moved.
Okay. I had brought this forward on behalf of the Fire Station Building Committee due to the fact that Chief DeFranzo had retired. The way we had it structured was that there was a fire chief as a representative, a firefighter as a representative to that building committee. And given the fact that the deputy chief had become chief from the lieutenant's position, it was thought that he would assume that chief's position because he's a chief in the department. And then we would get somebody else from the floor. So the next motion is to bring that line, line person up to replace Chief Hewlic. So it's just the way the committee was designed and to make sure that there was adequate represented, representation from a line firefighter as well. Just for the, anybody that has questions. There any other questions? Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. So this is the second part. Vote to confirm the appointment of Captain Jeffrey Matthew to fill the position of Fire Department Member to the Fire Station Building Committee effective immediately for an indefinite period to replace Deputy Chief Joseph Hewlic, who formerly held this position.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. And just as a point of information, there is a Fire Station Building Committee scheduled for this Thursday at 6:30 PM where I would invite my fellow councils, if you can be there, to be there as we are supposed to have the final report on the feasibility study for the fire station. Item 11, vote to accept the resignation of Paul Zotos from the Southbridge Housing Authority effective immediately, term to expire June of 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, accept it? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 12, vote to approve amendment Schedule 5 to reflect the state's increase of minimum wage.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Man?
Minimum wage just went up last year. So I'm just, what is this for? What year? 2019 or 2020?
So this was for the minimum wage that just went up in January. So it's to reflect that minimum wage increase in January because some of our Schedule 5 was below the minimum wage. So this is to bring those that were below the minimum wage up to minimum wage and to make any adjustments so that there would be a range.
Okay. So the current minimum wage is $11 per hour?
No, $12.
Oh, it went up to $12 per hour?
Went to $12, yes.
Thank you.
So that's why. Do you have anything else, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, just a comment. The minimum wage, as you may know, is slowly increasing every year to eventually get up to $15 an hour. So every year you're going to see increases like this until it reaches the $15 point.
And I think it was in the backup materials with the Massachusetts laws. It's on the third page. Standard minimum wage for January 1st, 2019 went up to $12. And in 2020, we'll go up to 275. So I think, I think I discussed it and we brought it up at General Government.
The last General Government meeting.
As we developed the budget starting in July, that we would account for that increase so that we would count for.
Right. So I wasn't able, because I, I work on Wednesdays, those are my late nights. So I won't be there again Wednesday. But, so we're, we're, we want to make sure that we're paying our employees minimum wage. But I see as minimum wage, if it's under it, the others are going up too. So, and, and I get it, but that's all. We're going to be broke. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. Any further, counsel man?
No, maybe, okay, I, I see where that, so I, I guess I, you know, like I said, I wasn't there for that General Government meeting. So we have all the members who were making under $12 an hour now up to $12 an hour or more. But then we have those who are making over $12 an hour, we raise their wages as well.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, there's a few employees here. What they did is they kept a differential between the minimum raise and those employees. So if those employees had raised, had gotten a raise in the past, you didn't want to bring up the new people to the same wages. So there's a small differential for a couple of part-time employees.
Okay. So I guess I, it, it, this is just misleading because it's vote to approve amending Schedule 5 to reflect the state's increase of minimum wage. And I see like the warden, he's at 1326 per hour and is proposed to go at $14 an hour, but he was above minimum wage. So I guess it's just a little bit misleading to me. Same with the clerk for the precinct workers, 1224 per hour now to $13. And I'm not trying to, like, I mean, I, I get it, the cost of living and everything and I totally get it. But I guess it's just misleading when it says Schedule 5 to reflect the state's increase of minimum wage and you're telling us that we have to, all we're doing, it sounds like up here, all we're doing are raising those that are under $12 an hour, that are making like under $12 an hour. And we're giving raises, we're increasing the other positions who are above $12 an hour, some at $13 an hour, we're, we're increasing their wage too. So it's just, to me, that's misleading.
I'll do respect, Mr. Chair, but this is a discussion for the State House, not for...
No, this is a discussion for us.
As a point of information. It is, I, I certainly understand counsel man's point is a point well taken as to, yes, the word is to reflect the increase and that was the intent of the motion. I have talked to other colleagues. I talked to the superintendent at Bay Path about this, this issue and how they addressed it. And he stated they do the same thing with the Bay Path, their schedules that whenever they have that increase in minimum wage is to keep the differential part. So, so I get the intent, perhaps.
Perhaps the warden in here should reflect.
It should have been a little bit more clear as to, you know, we are changing to reflect the, the increase, but there were other orders of effect that took place that, we discussed that length at the subcommittee. So I apologize that it's not as clear for, for you here. But we, it was all outlined in the charts for this. So it was this change in the entire schedule.
And I see that. My, my only problem is the agenda item that we're voting on doesn't really reflect everything that's being changed.
Okay. It's a point well taken. I, I apologize for that. I don't know, I, I guess we could have been a little bit more detailed, but it was to change the entire schedule to reflect the impact. If I added the word impact of the minimum wage, perhaps that would have, would have helped, but.
Maybe we can make amendment to make it.
Well, no, we're changing the schedule. So there's no, I mean, we've had the dialogue here. So I, I, your point is well taken, but I, I don't think an amendment is going to do anything because we're just changing the schedule and that's the, the motion before us.
The state's increase of minimum wage.
What's that?
No, I'm just talking to myself. That's all. I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
I'll certainly entertain a motion if you want to amend it. It's your right to propose an amendment.
It's all good. I'm good.
Okay. Counsel Steves?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to clarify for the people who are watching, there are, most, most of the people that are, that are being affected by this are actually election workers. So they don't work on a regular basis. There's only a handful, there's actually only six people that are being affected on a, six people that are being affected on a, on a permanent basis. Library page, library aide and cable access production assistant camera people. It's two, three and one respectively. And the way it's noted here is that the grand total to, to the budget is $1,388.16.
Anything further? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. I'm 13. Vote to approve the transfer of $60,000 from account number 6790 Landfill Royalties to account number 9105 Special Appropriation Town Manager Landfill Legal.
So moved.
Second.
Seeing none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 14, vote to accept the donation from the Claire Berts Trust in the amount of $60,000 to be used for the animal shelter.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Manager?
Just, Mr. Chairman, because I want to recognize the fact that what's being here so people understand. The town is currently looking at building a new animal shelter to benefit, obviously all the dogs or cats or animals that we, we pick up on the streets. The only reason I wanted to mention is this is a actual donation from a group that cares about animals, Claire Berts Trust. I just wanted to, on behalf of the town, thank them for this great contribution and this is going to go towards the, the building of an animal shelter that will be much better for the animals that are here in the town. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Did we already accept this donation?
We did not.
Because this came before somewhere along the line back around August.
It did, and we were discussing different avenues as far as the construction of the dog shelter, and it's been pending and dragging. So at some point Claire Burtz wanted an answer as to whether we were going to accept this or not, and we thanked them for the money, so it was best to accept the money and we'll figure out when it's going to take place in the shelter as we go along.
Okay, so we never accepted this?
We did not, no.
Okay.
No, and I had to, Councilman Manna, PPP, we had brought it up.
Was it PPP? Yeah, it was PPP.
It was PPP. At the last meeting I had brought it up as to whether it needed to go back to PPP, but we had discussed it at length, so that's why it's here before us again. Because we technically had never accepted it. Council Steve?
Just one quick question. Where do things stand as far as planning for the shelter?
Through you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, the, I've drafted up a request for quotes for the engineering plan to be done. Uh, that currently is with Heather and the police chief. The police chief has said it was okay. He gave me some, um, older design documents to attach to that when we do it. Waiting for Heather's final sign off on it, and then we'll be putting it out.
Council DePietro?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Guess it's okay. It's going out the next couple of days.
Okay.
Ron, just wondering, are you folks still looking behind, uh, Chatham Street or...
Through you, Mr. Chairman. That is the answer, yes. Right in that, where the old, um, the paved parking kind of area is, it was going to be nice getting, that is the area we're looking at. I think the intention is to utilize it, incorporate the existing, um, storage area, I guess is what it might be called. Uh, there's a storage area there, we're talking about encompassing that into a new building.
Control and dislocation.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 15, vote to ratify the memorandum of agreement between the Town of Southridge and the Department of Public Works, Unit SEIU, CTW-CLC Local 2194, effective July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, obviously this is an agreement that's been negotiated by the Town of Southridge and, uh, the DPW Union. Uh, I think the negotiations went very well. I think it's a reasonable agreement for both sides, the town side of government and for the, uh, DPW workers. Obviously, town council has reviewed this and have, uh, did a kind of, kind of agreement on this, and it's up for its final vote tonight.
Further discussion?
I have one quick question.
Council Steve?
Um, through you to the manager, I'm just, I just want to remind when we had the last discussion, we, I think we asked for the whole contract, we just have the changes that are in here.
Correct.
Um, I have no problem with the changes and I'll vote yes, but I, we did ask for the whole contract.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so you're correct. It takes some time, the attorney is drafting that into the final contract. These are the terms of agreement. Everything else stays the same, but there will be forthcoming a new contract with these changes in it. But we're voting on tonight is the agreement, the existing agreement with these specific changes. And of course, we added a fiscal note for your review as well to this contract.
Council Adams?
Just to clarify, you said, uh, July 1st, 2018, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Great. Any further discussion? Roll call, now, Secretary.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council DePietro?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Nash?
Yes.
Thank you. Unanimous, all present. Item 16, motion. Move that the town, what's that?
I do have a comment, just so that...
On which?
On this next motion.
Oh, okay. Move that the council vote to appropriate within the clothing and uniform account number 1 dot 499 dot 5192, the amount of $671 for the payment of $225 for each member of the DPW Bargain Unit for fiscal year 2019.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Heather?
For clarity purposes, we are not paying them. It's an allotment of up to 225,000, uh, $225, um, for the purposes of, uh, clothing allowance. In addition, um, I don't believe that we actually need to appropriate more money. Um, I think it could be handled, anything that is in excess of what is in the budget right now could be handled in my budget. Um, because I know that I'm actually short a member right now, I wouldn't, he wants to say something.
Mr. Commander?
Yeah, the, uh, legal council has said that we have to vote to technically appropriate these funds even though they're already in the budget, so it's just a technical process to accept the terms of the contract.
I would say allocate, though, not payment of, so if that's a friendly amendment.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, these are, these words specifically, so I think we should go with the attorney's recommendation. The, the, the way it was explained to me is that, um, formerly the town council has to appropriate the money for that specific purpose, even though the money's there, this appropriates to that specific purpose, and he gave us the wording.
I just, I'm, I'm questioning that my guys are going to want to get $225 each if they see payment of to a person. But that's all my question.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, actually, when I, when I originally read this, uh, this item, I actually kind of was thinking on the lines, the same lines Heather was thinking on. Um, I was thinking that what we're really trying to do is increase the, uh, is increase the annual allowance to $225. We're not actually, we're not, we're not voting to pay them $225.
Correct.
That's pretty much what you're, you're thinking, right? Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
The way this reads to me, it sounds like we're actually going to pay the guys $225.
Exactly, that's what I read it to.
Not give them an allocation for purposes of clothing up to $225.
Oh, she's saying it's not the...
That's how I read it too, yes.
That's what you're saying?
So I'll move to make that as an amendment.
If you have to do the allocation, I'm fine with that, understand, but...
What is, what is your amendment?
Okay, I, I want to amend it to read, um, to start with the amount of $671, uh, to increase the annual allowance to $225 for each member.
Okay. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment?
I see what you, I get it. Thank you, guys.
Now back to the main motion. So the main motion will move, um, go ahead, read it there, Council.
Um, move that the town council vote to appropriate within the clothing and uniform account number 1.499.5192, the amount of $671 to increase the annual allowance to $225 for each member of the DPW Bargain Unit for fiscal, fiscal year 2019.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed?
Actually, clarify, should that be fiscal 2020?
Should we say again?
Should that be fiscal 2020?
No, it's for this year.
That's for this year, okay, okay, okay.
Okay. Councilman?
I just want to make sure our recording record all that.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because I didn't hear some of this, so I just went to make sure.
Okay, you got it, because I can give it to you if you need.
Oh, yeah, I'm good with it, yeah.
All right. Okay, thank you. Item 17, move that the town council vote to appropriate within the snow and ice overtime account number 1 dot 495 dot 5131, in the amount of $385 to cover the cost of overtime cost, to cover the 2% increase in the base wages for fiscal year 2019 for members of the DPW Bargain Year.
So moved.
You went to the one, step 17. You combined 17 and 18, didn't you?
No.
No?
I, I honestly think 17's misworded also because the, the purpose of the increasing the snow and ice account was to cover the change in cost for the meal allowance, not to do anything with regarding their pay. The calculation of that, that 385 was a change of, from $750 to $10 an hour for meal allowance, and it was based on the previous year's account.
Okay, I missed the amendment. The clean motion, do you have it?
Yeah.
Thanks.
So I should have read, right, I apologize. Move that town council vote to appropriate within the snow and ice overtime account, dot, 1 dot 495 dot 5131, in the amount of 385 to cover the increase in the meal allowance for fiscal year 2019 for members of the DPW Bargain Year.
So moved.
Evidently, I didn't get that email out of the town's email account, so, because I honestly didn't see that change, so.
Wasn't on mine either.
All those in favor? Opposed? Now, is this one correct right here?
Yes.
18, motion, move to town council to vote to appropriate within the salary account number 1 dot 499 dot 5110, the amount of $16,152 for funding the 2% base wage increase for members of the DPW Bargain Year for fiscal year 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Thank you. Vote to ratify the contract with Pioneer Consultant Group for $4,500 to update the indirect cost study for fiscal year 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Anybody? And this was for the water and sewer rates and other indirect costs, correct, Mr. Manager?
That is exactly what it is. I'll, I'll just explain it briefly. Uh, we have a sewer and water enterprise account, and there's certain work that the town does on behalf of those accounts. And this is basically a study that tells us how much the town can charge back to these accounts for things like payroll and that kind of stuff, or what they call indirect costs. In other words, work that town employees do, uh, on be, on behalf of these enterprise accounts.
Council Steve?
Um, yeah, Mr. Manager, just, just clarify, how often do we have to do these kinds of, these kinds of updates?
I think she does it every three to, between three and five years.
Three, five, okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 20, vote to ratify the professional services agreement between the Town of Southridge and Hassett Financial Services Incorporated in the amount of $29,500 to develop a school facilities management plan. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Councilman?
Something I missed too. So I'm, I'm, why are we discussing the school? Is it because we just have to transfer some money or something, or what's, because this should be the schools?
No, I'll defer to the town manager.
Thank you. This is a community compact grant that we applied for on behalf of the schools. This does the same kind of facility management plan we did for all the town buildings when they evaluated all the town buildings for a 10-year capital plan to see what the needs are. This is the same exact kind of thing except for all the school buildings, because it was applied for, uh, from the town, that's why we're doing it. But it's all state money being utilized for this program.
Okay.
Councilman?
So if I could follow up on that, then why doesn't it say anywhere in here that this is, we're voting on a community comp, to accept a community compact grant or any type of grant?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, we, we already voted to accept the community compact grant already in a separate occasion in committee, and it's already been voted on. This is essentially just voting for the contract itself.
Okay, a separate occasion up here on town council?
Yeah.
On town council? Oh, I don't remember. I apologize. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
And just as a, a, a point of clarification also, we, we are the owners of the buildings, so it's up to us to do the facilities.
I know, but, okay, so if you want to get nitty gritty, the school will say, uh, but...
That's always the argument. I've been on both sides of that argument, so I understand it, so. Council Steve?
Mr. Manager, quick question. Do we have any, any other money left in the community compact grant that we can use for other things?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, if we did, we have to give it back. So anything over, the grant is designed for a specific purpose.
It is, okay.
So if we get excess money, we're required to return it.
Okay.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 21, vote to repeal parking permit P dash 00019, which restricts parking to one hour in front of former Lucy's Laundry on Mechanic Street.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Councilman?
Um, so, I guess I'm confused. Why are we changing it? We've taken away the one-hour limit. Is it because there's not, nothing there now, or is it going to be all-day parking?
And it was a request from residents down on Mechanic Street. Previously, that was a business where Lucy's Laundry was. It was one section right in front of the business that allowed them to, to have one-hour parking to move it along. The residents have requested that that go back to just normal parking without any restrictions except for the alternate side parking to give them more parking in the area.
So I guess to follow up on that, so when another business comes in there, which hopefully, keep our fingers crossed, and it does...
Then they would have to come through the motions of getting parking change and everything else, but, but you don't know a business that'd come in there that needs all-day parking, so.
But how many parking spaces are we actually easing up?
It's like 50 feet.
Two cars. Doesn't make sense to keep going back and forth, but that's okay. Okay, thank you. I mean, eventually we might go back to one-hour parking, so, okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. 22, vote to adopt the change to the alternate side parking in Snow Emergent Street routes and change the language to read West Side Dress at the Forester, to Forest, sorry, to Chapin Street, under the exception to alternate side parking to be consistent with parking permit P dash 00069. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Owen? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Item 23, vote to ratify change order number two from Stan Tech Consultant Services in the amount of $79,500 for additional construction administration services for electrical upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Councilman?
So, um, I'm really glad to see this on the agenda. That means things are progressing down there?
Yes.
Because, I mean, I did the tour probably about, how many years ago? It's been a few years. I did the tour, and, um, it's all progressing then.
Yep, um, we are moving, we're very close to being done on our two projects that are currently underway, which would be the biotower upgrade and the Sludge D Water Chemical Edition project. Those are both in their final stages. And this is the next project, was our electrical upgrades, which we've already gone out to bid, and its subsequent item will be on here. bid, and its subsequent item will be on here. This is a change order for the engineering oversight part of the contract. Originally, the estimate when the original design documents were, went out to bid, went for requests or proposals, they thought, they have to guess, they said six-month project. They're projecting now, based on the design they did, it will be a 14-month project, so therefore, that's a change in the cost for the oversight, contract administration and things of that nature. So that would be the reason for the change order, to reflect the actual projected construction timeframe.
I'm just excited to see things progressing down there, that's all.
We're trying. Thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just to note that we had extensive conversation and conversation about this in subcommittee, and subsequently, Director Blakely answered all my questions with extreme clarity, documented everything that I had asked for, so I'm very grateful for that above and beyond, especially after having to deal with the snow and ice and all the other issues the last week, so I'd like to thank Heather formally for going the extra mile to answer my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Item 24, vote to ratify the contract with Levangi Electric, prepared by Stan Tech Consultant Services, in the amount of $1,437,000 for wastewater treatment plant, or WWTP, dash zero one, dash 2018 electrical upgrades.
Is there a motion?
Same move.
Second. Discussion? Seen none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Item 25, vote to transfer $187,000 from sewer retained earnings to the project account for electrical upgrades to the wastewater treatment plant.
Same move.
Second. Discussion? Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Perhaps this would have been better suited to the last agenda item, but just a quick note that this project is, was bid under budget. However, due to some of the shuffling of monies that we had done, and some initial budgeting of $1.25 million, I think it was for this project, we knew it was going to come in higher. This just brings it back into balance, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation, Counsel Nash. I appreciate it because I missed it, wasn't able to attend that meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Item 26, vote to ratify change order number three from hot engineering for the biotower upgrades project WWTP-2017-02, in the amount of $17,321 to encompass COR number seven, rail and modifications to accommodate knife, gate, valve, valve stem, is that valve stem?
It should be valve.
Should be valve stem, right. Extensions in the amount of $2,196. COR number eight, ABF Bubble Control Panel Investigation and Design Proposal, in the amount of $9,672. COR number 10, shimmin of concrete supports for media at biotower number two, in the amount of $5,064. COR number 11, application of bond breaker at foundation walls of biotower number two, in the amount of $389.
Same move.
Second. Discussion? Seen none? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present.
Item 27, vote to approve the payment of $42,272.81 to the Town of Charlton, representing their share of annual earnings based on the intermunicipal grant, IMA for water.
Same move.
Second. Discussion?
Chairman, this is just a contractual obligation between the Town of Southridge and the Town of Charlton.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, all present. Thank you, Heather. Counsel's forum. Counsel Man?
Nothing to say tonight, thank you.
Counsel Nash?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thought I had a couple of things to say tonight, but I think I'll just leave it at this. I look forward to Chris Heron's visit to Southridge Middle School tomorrow. I hope other councilors are going to attend. As I last year when he presented to the high school, it's amazing, it's impactful, it's money well spent by the, this and the last council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel DePietro?
Nothing for you this evening, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Counsel Daniel?
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Counsel Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. We're still looking for a few individuals for the trustee soldiers sailors, marines, and airmen board. Right now, we have three. We're looking for two more veterans. The town manager will be sending up, I think, the three, or at least I have given two names to his office. I have another one coming in on Wednesday, and it looks like we just need two more veterans, but we do have a quorum if all three are accepted for the five-member board. Curbside Advisory Board, working on admission statement right now, finishing that up. It's been a busy week. We are, I think there's two applications so far to us as far as citizens. We are looking for anybody, any citizen that wants to partake in this. I will be posting on Facebook tomorrow, the requirements and what we're kind of looking During the MMA conference, I got to sit down with quite a few people from the trash and recycling side. I've already had a few phone calls. A lot of work has been done throughout the state and the local region, so I'm looking forward to getting everybody started on this and working through this and briefing the town council appropriately. Claire Burtz, I want to thank you and your organization for everything you do. I've hiked your trails. Your trails are across the pond from me and right down the road.